All right, good evening. I'd like to call the August 15th meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village Board of Education to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
And Mr. Vedder?
Here. Okay, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, don't have any visitors so far with us this evening, so we'll go right into the principals' reports. Who would like to lead off?
I'll go ahead and go first.
All right.
All right, so we're looking forward to the changes that'll be happening around the school this year. I know we had a discussion the other day. We had our orientation for new district staff members, and it was amazing the number of new faces. I think there was like 12 or 14 people on there, teachers, administrative positions, district-wide and building-wide. So it's gonna be a fun year of just meeting and greeting these new people and the services they're gonna provide. Laptop pickup, this is the last week to pick up laptops during this designated hours of 9:00 to noon and 1:00 to 3:00. You should receive an instant alert tonight where Jeff Schaefer plans on opening up tomorrow, Tuesday, 8:15, from 4:00 to 7:00 for laptop pickup. And then, of course, the evening of open house on the 25th from 4:00 to 7:00 also, there will be laptop pickup. Open house, again, like I just stated, will be on Thursday, August 25th, from 6:00 to 7:00. Again, this is a 1 through 12 event. Is that correct?
Um, 1, 2, 4 through 12 event.
1, 2, 4 through 12 event. Thank you. Students of all ages will be in the building. Of course, you know, on the high school side, you can check your lockers, you can visit your new teachers, you can pick up your laptops. Also, I know that there will be junior class meeting that night, I believe at 7:00 PM, so an instant alert will go out on that piece. Final forms, students and parents need to complete all final form requirements for the upcoming school year in order to be fully registered for all events. Those sports or athletes for the fall have done that to be eligible, but we need the rest of the students who will arrive on the 29th of August on the first day of school to try to complete all of those forms. Schedule changes, again, like we have the last few years, all schedule change requests on the high school side must be completed prior to the first day of school. Our new guidance counselor, Mandy Wyman, has been available all week. We've been taking schedule change requests over the phone, email, and of course scheduling appointments for current students and new students to make those changes. But again, our goal is that first day of school, kids will attend the classes of their choosing. It helps with, of course, the logistical thing and, of course, like desks and chairs and everything else. Ohio's newest graduation requirements and options going to affect this year, the Class 2023, again, to the board members and to families out there. We're now going to the SEALs. There are two SEALs that you must, I guess, qualify for. You can have two state SEALs, and you can have one state SEAL and one local SEAL, but you can't have two local SEALs. On top of that, you know, you still have your regular requirements of taking all the end-of-course tests, so please keep that in mind. The difference is, you must be proficient, ALG-1, ELA-2, and of course, I have to throw this topic because I think it's funny, proficient isn't just getting a 3 anymore. Actually proficient, you can get a 2 and still be proficient because it goes by the three to just score 684 now on those two tests, where all the other tests pertain more to the SEALs. And then, of course, you have your regular local requirements of earning credits and all that fun stuff. And I will say this, Mandy Wyman and Jeff Schaefer, they've done a great job creating a spreadsheet to track all of these students, and we're getting everybody, I guess, lined up where they need to be. We're actually doing audits of all of our students. Mandy actually went through all of our seniors and juniors over the summer. She's now working on our sophomores, and she's doing a great job, and I really do appreciate her help. After that, all I have is, you know, again, it's great to have a full office staff available and ready in here because it's amazing how busy this office really is this week. A special shout-out again to our new guidance counselor. She's been doing an amazing job, and I do appreciate all her efforts over the summer and, of course, having her back in the building. And of course, I'm looking forward to working with Angie Smith. As you know, is our new K-12 assistant principal, but also the special education director. I think that will alleviate a lot of stress off the principals and IEP meetings and providing the best education for our students and, of course, the best support for our special education staff. So that's one thing I think that we've struggled with, just being principals or organizational leaders, as I say. We sometimes struggle with the educational leader part. And then, of course, I'm looking forward to meeting Brittany Carpenter and sitting down with her. She's our new social worker. Because I know something else that I think we need to improve on as an admin team and an office is the truancy piece. Sometimes the most difficult cases, those are the easy ones to keep track of and get truancy filed. It's those kids that kind of creep into those hours, and you miss out on those opportunities to hold accountable for that, but also provide the support they need to be in the school. So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, my first report. I would like to express I'm very excited to begin this school year with the middle school staff and students. As I transition into my new position here, I can say that every single person that I've met at Hicksville has been completely welcoming and helpful. So, you know, as I get settled in, if it's someone that I've met, I just want to thank them because everyone's been very helpful. Still a lot of people to meet, but everyone's been great so far. We're welcoming four new teachers in the middle school this year, and I can say that they have all shown tremendous enthusiasm for beginning their new roles here at Hicksville, seeing them all in the building already. Robin Chamberlain and I are planning a fifth-grade orientation on open house night this year to help ease the transition for these students into the middle school, as well as provide valuable information to parents. We will review classroom and school expectations, go over laptop usage and expectations, as well as explain the new bus to school times for the fifth and sixth grade that we have this year. Students will also be able to grab a copy of their schedule and receive their locker assignments. This orientation will be held right at the start of open house on the 25th at 6:00 PM in the high school gym. And then, the seventh and eighth grade teachers will be hosting a brief orientation for these students as well prior to the start of open house. They would like to review the expectations for students, as well as discuss the Washington, DC trip, and then allow for parents to ask any questions that they have. This seventh and eighth grade orientation will be held at 5:30 in the commons. And we'll be sending this information out to parents in the coming days, but it really is my hope that these two informational nights will be very helpful for our middle school students. It's one of the things that I heard from multiple people right when I took on this position that they think that it would be beneficial, so we're looking forward to hosting those on open house night.
Thank you.
So, open house for our preschool kindergarten and third-grade students is scheduled for Tuesday, August 23rd, at 6 o'clock. Now, this is something new for our third-grade students and parents. Third-grade parents will be requested to come into the main event entrance and then head on down to the elementary gym for a 10- to 15-minute presentation by me, just to answer any concerns or questions about the third-grade guarantee and the state test that we give in the fall. And then, parents will be invited into their child's classroom so they can just discuss some, you know, transition from second grade to third grade. In third grade, they're just a lot more independent, switching classes, just how the third-grade teachers communicate, and like their grading policy and homework expectations. But then, the rest of the open house will be on that Thursday. Huge thanks to United Way of Defiance. Today, we had 23 kindergarten students in attendance for our five-day jumpstart readiness -- kindergarten jumpstart camp. I just think this is an amazing opportunity for these little kiddos to get acclimated to the kindergarten routines and work on a number of skills prior to school starting. Mrs. Brown and Ms. Lee are our lead teachers, and then we have Mrs. Wonderly helping in the classrooms as well. A huge thanks to the variety of community members, as well as our high school cheerleaders and football players who helped raise funds and collect school supplies that helped to benefit over 150 incoming students. Building secretaries will have extra school supplies for anybody that needs them. And class lists continue to change as more and more students are enrolling in the district. Just a reminder that students and parents can start paying student fees. K-12 fees are now $60, and preschool fees are $50. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Fork County report?
None.
Okay. Keith, superintendent's report?
Yes, sir. Jeff already mentioned our orientation day on August 1st. We had actually 10 new employees, but we have the administrators there as well. So it was a very busy day. We defined that so that each department, like Mr. Ruin, talked to them all about requisitions and the proper way to do that. The tech guys came in, addressed their issues. Eric, Director of Operations, so we switched through all those different departments. And then, we also did a tour of Hicksville so that they can see where our kiddos are coming from. So it was a very cool day. Also on that day was the van and bus training, and most of our bus drivers and van drivers completed that for the year. The ESC hosted APD Palooza the following day on August 2nd, and Jerry Brooks was the speaker. He truly did captivate the audience for the morning. There were several of our employees that went to either one of the sessions that he had, so it was a great day. And then, there were also some workshops later in the day for the second group, if people wanted to stay for those. I held our local administrative retreat that I put together each year. That was held August 3rd and 4th, so it was a really busy week. We discussed countless topics for the year, established districts and individual goals, and worked on professional development plan for the year. This is always a great way for us as an admin team to get the year kicked off and to start that process of working together for countless hours that we always do throughout the year, right? Then, on Friday of that week, August 5th, we had our ESC Fork County Retreat that is the administrative retreat, and that's held over at the ESC. Our guest speaker for that retreat was Joe Santilipo, and then we also had legal updates at each principal's appropriate level, as well as the superintendents had one also, like our legal updates and different updates that we get each year. We continue to prepare for the school year, but everything seems to be falling into place. I actually haven't seen my administrators too much. They've been really busy, and I've been really busy, but I guess that's a good thing, so... Any questions?
I would like to say that if there's an opportunity next time for Jerry Brooks speaking, that you should open it to board members, too. I really enjoy him.
He's fun. He's so fun.
Laughed and you cried.
That's good. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Keith. Sounds like you have been very busy. Need a motion for minutes and financials, please.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Minutes from the regular board meeting of July 18, 2022. Treasurers consent agenda items. Cash reconciliation as of July 31, 2022. Financial statements for July 2022. Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2023 as presented. Total general fund resources of $15,785,803.60. And total resources for all funds of $20,891,847.85. Approve fiscal year 2023 amended temporary appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $12,165,794.90. And total appropriations for all funds of $15,118,923.40. Approve certificate of the total amount from all sources available for expenditures and balances as of July 1, 2022. General total fund amount available plus balances of $15,946,440.81. And all funds total amount available plus balances of $21,051,347.13. Accept the following donations: $500 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for football. Mike, you have anything you want to add to any of that?
I really don't. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, roll call, please.
All right. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes, motion carries 5 to 0. Need a motion for employment and certified staff.
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Steph. To approve resolution number 2023-01 to reemploy Sandra Brown as a teaching employee in accordance with the terms and conditions of the employment contract and release and waiver agreement.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes, motion carries 5 to 0. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Minda. Recommend to approve the following as kindergarten jumpstart camp instructors from August 15 to August 19, 2022. Sandra Brown, co-lead instructor at a rate of 2967 per hour. Melissa Lee, co-lead instructor at a rate of 2967 per hour. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Sandra Brown as classroom instructor with five years' experience at a master's degree for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Aubrey Giddings as classroom instructor with one-year experience at a bachelor degree for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve Kayla Vedder as a Title I tutor for the 2022-2023 school year at a rate of $130 with a maximum of 179 days to be funded through federal Title I-A grant funds. Recommend to approve the school psychologist's salary schedule. Recommend to approve the substitute teacher's salary schedule beginning with 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve Amy Haver as a substitute teacher certified for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2022-2023 school year. Elaine Gurkin, elementary music director. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2022-2023 school year. Jackie Seebenauer, golf.
What is Aubrey Giddings? What position is that?
Middle school special ed.
Middle school special ed. Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes, motion carries 5 to 0. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Minda.
I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve Stacy Wagner as Title I tutor for the 2022-2023 school year at half 3.75 hours, daily rate of $65 with a maximum of 180 days, and as a Title I kindergarten intervention specialist at the hourly rate of $30.79 for half 3.75 hours per day with a maximum of 180 days to be funded through federal Title I-A grant funds. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Abstain.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes, motion carries 4 to 0 with one abstention. Need a motion for employment classified staff.
Still moving. I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Morgan Wanderly as kindergarten jumpstart camp assistant from August 15th to August 19th, 2022, at a rate of $15 per hour. Recommend to approve the Director of Operations salary schedule. Recommend to approve the Director of Operations assistant salary schedule. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Karen Meiser as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2022-2023 school year contingent on obtaining appropriate licensure. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Morgan Wanderly as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2022-2023 school year contingent on obtaining appropriate licensure. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Megan Cover, cheerleading assistant. Ashley Doctor, co-freshman class advisor. Amanda Ridgway, co-freshman class advisor. Madison Smith, co-chair advisor, 7th and 8th. Taylor Wells, co-chair advisor, 7th and 8th. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2022-2023 school year. Garrett Croll, football. Michael Myers, cross-country basketball and track.
So, paraprofessionals. Those are people that work with individual students? Special ed, what are those?
Kara will actually be a title paraprofessional.
Okay.
Not doing direct construction, but to the degree. Morgan Wanderly is assigned to a kindergarten student that needs a parent.
So they're kind of like educational facilitators? Would that be fair? I'm ignorant of exactly what they are, too, so...
Kara will be like junior.
Okay.
So how is that different than the Title I?
Actually, the Title I, it is how they include the Title I funds.
Right.
The Title I teachers, we do skills programs now. Kara cannot do the skills program, so she can pull out.
So she'll do pullouts.
We actually have a script that she'll be going by herself. And then, with, and she's touring like kindergarten students, you know, Mrs. Brown is going to be providing active encouragement.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries 5 to 0. Need a motion for services and agreements, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, was it Minda or Steph? Okay, thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve an agreement between the Village of Hicksville and Hicksville Exempted Village Schools for use of park facilities. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries 5 to 0. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Minda. Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the 2022-2023 membership with the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. Recommend to approve the 2022-2023 Ohio Student Accident Insurance Program administered by Student Protective Agency. Recommend to approve the Education Option Program Agreement administered by the Wood County Education Service Center for the Wood County Juvenile Detention Center, the Juvenile Residential Center of Northwest Ohio, and the Wood County Alternative School for the 2022-2023 school year. Amount of service to be: $80 per student per day for students assigned to JDC; $85 per student per day for students assigned to JRC; per-seat purchase at WCA is $11,505 for a full year; per-seat purchase at WCA is $5,753 for one semester.
Do you buy those seats in advance or just as a student needs it?
I definitely, I have a question on this. Mike, remind me, what was the cost per day for students last year at JDC?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
And I don't want to say a number. That's a lot higher this year.
I was thinking so, too.
Seventy?
I thought it was like 60 to 70.
It was in the, I was in the 60s. I'd have to go back and look, but it was in the 60s.
In fact, I swear I can remember it was only $45. And so those numbers are jumping out at me. And then, the per-seat purchase at the WCA, pretty much, I'm assuming, anytime we assign a juvenile to a long-term stay, they're probably automatically putting them in the online courses for education, and typically, we get a per-day rate for that. What they're saying is for the long-time stays, that's, I guess, a semester cost, they're just telling you what it's going to be. And that's, I mean, that's like catastrophic cost. I don't know if you get any sort of reimbursement for staying there. That's, I mean, $36 a day to educate kids.
If they're at a detention center, we get no extra excess cost?
And we get cost, like, I mean, you could say, you know, we just signed off on kids that are already at JDC in the summer. That's not even a certain school year. If they're assigned there in the summer, we give them, which I know that's funding as a fiscal year.
So if it's midway through a semester, is it prorated?
It was $79 per day last year, and $85 per day for JRC. So that was from September of 2021, though they're not that expensive.
Yeah, that's not that, not as much as we thought. Thanks for looking that up.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
Roughly, how many kids do we have for a year? I mean, roughly.
I can, I can be on many dates, maybe.
That's fine.
I'd say on the average year, 7 through 12, I wouldn't be surprised if you're pushing probably 100 to 125 days.
Oh, my God.
On a bad year, we'll have to be in and out of there for, usually not a whole semester, but you'd be surprised.
Wow. Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the insight. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes, motion carries 5 to 0. Need a motion for other business.
So, I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Minda. Recommend to approve a $40 computer protection plan for those students who are issued school computers. Recommend to approve the High School Staff Handbook for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the Middle School Staff Handbook for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the Elementary School Staff Handbook for the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the 2022-2023 bus routes and designate authority to the superintendent to designate or relocate subsequent school bus stops. Recommend to approve the in-state and out-of-state tuition rates for the 2022-2023 school year.
See, there's the savings. It used to cost $50 for the laptops, and now it's only 40. So that's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes, motion carries 5 to 0. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Eric.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Jen. Who are we going to pick?
Who's going?
Recommend to approve someone as a delegate for the 2022-2023 OSBA Annual Capital Conference.
Who's planning on going?
I can't believe this year.
I've got a trade show in Louisville I can't get out of.
It's a November date, is that right?
Yeah.
I believe that works for me. I can go as alternate.
You can put me down for them. It's me. Yes, I'll.
Okay.
The meeting you get to go to is really.
Last year's was bad. Amen.
Okay. Maybe this year better.
I hope so.
All right, roll call.
There's like a delegate meeting.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Steph.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Eric Vedder as alternate delegate to the 2022 OSBA Annual Capital Conference. Thanks, Eric, for doing that.
That's right.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Where's the addendum? Oh, it's at the bottom. Okay, all right. Need a motion for the addendum of employment classified staff.
I'll move.
Thanks, Steph.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Pam Yoder as cafeteria worker from 5.75 hours per day to 6.5 hours per day, beginning with the 2022-2023 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2022-2023 school year. Jennifer Bergman, High School Musical Director Assistant. Jennifer Bergman, Elementary Musical Director Assistant. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Sorry, I missed that. Okay, any old business?
So I just comment and a clarification. In the paper, there was, I think, a little bit of a miscommunication on the sign that we discussed for 018. And when we talked about it, we kind of did what we were talking about, but it's just the flashing "school zone" sign, not any other signage in addition to what we have out there. So it's just that flashing, like, what is it, 25 mile per hour, whatever it is, "school zone." And so there was a little bit of communication. I got a couple of questions on that in community. And it does look like they started, they put flags out for it, somebody went out and marked for it, so it looks like it's going to go. So that's what that was, the last one.
Good. Good of me. Any other old business? Any discussion?
Well, Keith, like always, I love walking through the school, and it takes me a long time because I want to stop and look at every new picture. I notice they're all. And so I'm just like, and then I always find one that I didn't see before somehow, but yeah. They're fun.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Another one of those little extra touches that makes it special.
The printer died, though, for the big pictures this year. So current office, as usual, it's always real good to me. They got me a loaner, but we have one that'll be coming to replace that. So it gets used a lot by not just me for the pictures, but for a lot of other things as well. So, yeah, it's a process, but I'm happy to do it.
Well, it's worth doing. It's awesome. There's a lot of.
I tried to have it done, I left on my vacation, and I was, had it all done, and then I went to use the big printer, and it's like, oh, no. So I did not have that done before I left, but I got right on it when I got back. And Eric and John, as usual, are amazing, so.
Well, thank you guys for doing it. Any other discussion? And we don't have any unannounced guests tonight. So we'll go into executive session, say, at 10 past. And then we need to go, we also need to go back out.
Return to regular session.
To vote, potentially, on your contract, right?
Yeah, address treasurer's contract. Renewal of treasurer's contract. Hopefully.
Yeah. Let's see there.
So we will be going back out of executive session.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Minda.
I'll step. It must sound a lot alike today.
Okay. And we'll go into executive session in five minutes, 10 after 6.
I'll do roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero.
And our next meeting is September 19th? Okay. I just had luck to have you.